2018 at 7:37 PM in the Cumberland High School auditorium. And I ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dennen makes a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Demodica. All in favor? Against? The ayes have it. I also would like to state for the record that Mr. Hess is absent today. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Approval of minutes, regular meeting, 7/12/2018. Approval of minutes, executive session, 7/12/2018. The enrollment report for 8/1/2018. The school police report of 7/1/2018. Is it a residency truancy report of 8/1/2018? Pleasure of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion to approve the consent agenda, second by Mr. Fiorillo. All in favor? Against? The ayes have it, 6-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the report out of executive session meeting on 8/9/2018, this evening. There were no executive session votes, and I need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Pleasure of the committee?
Motion to seal the minutes.
Mr. Dennen makes a motion to seal the minutes, second by Mr. Demodica. All in favor? Against? The ayes have it, 6-0. I have to say that I think this is the second time I've gotten that whole section right without having to been, yeah, only took a couple of years. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Mr. Mitchell, process for school construction bond referendum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. As you all know, we have a major bond referendum in the state that the voters in the state of Rhode Island will be voting on. It's actually $250 million referendum focused on improving school facilities. And we have done an extensive amount of work in preparation for this referendum and lining the town of Cumberland up to be in a position to access some of this money. In fact, several members of this school committee, members of the town council, and others on the municipal side have worked to create our list of things that we would like to get accomplished with our share of the money. And we want to be in a position where we can actually access this money. So there is a process that needs to be followed. We've already had several meetings to organize to be ready for this referendum. And we have a couple of gentlemen here this evening. Dr. Frank Locker is an educational planner, and you all know Louis Torotto from Toronto Architects. He has done a lot of work in the town of Cumberland and has provided a tremendous amount of support to us as we have done a lot of work on our facility. So these gentlemen are here this evening to share information about the process that we are required to follow to be in a position to access this money. We also have some important dates coming, in the coming months, for us to do a tremendous amount of planning. We've already met several times to do some planning. So with that, I will turn this over to Louis Torotto and Dr. Locker so that they can share with us the process that we need to go through. Louis?
It's a sound. Can you hear me? Oh, yes, it is. Thank you. Good evening. My name's Louis Torotto. I'm president of Toronto Architects. As the superintendent mentioned, we have our educational planner with us, but also Robert Stack, who's the vice president of our company, is also with us. As you are aware, the RIDE process for new project construction is divided into four phases, which they call stages. It all begins by you issuing a letter of intent, which is due August 15. Upon approval, you are then to move forward with stage one, which is due September 17. Stage one is basically the portion of the process that is supposed to be investigating what the issues are and deficiencies that you have in your school department. Upon approval of stage one, then you're giving the go-ahead to submit stage two. Stage two is due in February 17. Didn't mention stage one was due September 17. Stage two is due February 15. Stage two is where you're supposed to investigate all of the options available to deal with the issues identified during stage one, do schematic design for all of the projects, and then put a cost for the projects. Then, once stage two is approved, you move on to stage three, which is the construction documents made up of the blueprints and specifications. And stage four is the construction of the project. When we started talking about this project and its process, I told you that you will probably be required by the Department of Education to have educational master plan facilities conducted. Since then, that actually has become the regulation. RIDE issued the requirement for anybody seeking major project approval to include an educational master plan conducted by a certified educational master planner. They gave us very specific requirements that needed to be addressed during those educational visioning sessions. So we anticipated this and are prepared to deal with all of that. The way that we propose going through the process is that upon your submittal of the letter of intent and the notice to proceed with stage one, we are going to focus on the portion, and really we'll start the preparation for stage two, the portion of the project that is related to health and safety and all of the deficiencies identified in the Jacobs Report and in previous stage twos that we've done. So we plan to move forward with that immediately. In September, towards the end of September, the visioning sessions, educational master planning process will begin. And then, in November, we will start the schematic designs to complete stage two related to the renovations that are required in each building to accommodate for the educational master plan, 21st century learning environments. So I'm going to turn it over now to Frank. We've worked with Frank on many, many visioning sessions and master plans in Rhode Island. Frank is not only an outstanding educational planner, but also an architect, so we have a great working relationship, and I feel that we're very fortunate to have him part of our team. With that, I turn it over to Dr. Locker.
I generally don't tell people I'm an architect, and the reason is, is most of my work focuses on education, educational delivery models, the connection between schools and community. And when people learn that I'm an architect, they quickly want to talk about buildings. And the danger, and that's a good thing, but the danger is that if you talk about buildings too quickly in a process, you will bring to the table your understanding, is that an honor? Okay. People bring their understanding of what they know about buildings, and that's usually based highly on when they went to school. And that's well and fine, but it leads to the danger of making the new building a new version of the same old thing. And if education was the same as it was, then that might be a good thing. But we are in a place right now in the 20th century where the world is rapidly changing. Just think about what our kids know and do about technology, and the fact that it's expected that our current students will have had nine different jobs by the time they're age 40, and half of those jobs haven't been invented yet. That's a different kind of a world that we had growing up. So we need to talk about education. We need to talk about how our schools are connected to community, and we need to make a set of decisions that are grounded in community values, community realities, but also grounded in an understanding and anticipation of changes in the world. So that's why I don't tell people I'm an architect. Although, the end goal of the work that I lead, and then the work that I will be following through with Toronto Architects, is in fact to future-proof your buildings, to assure that here in Cumberland, whatever comes out of this master plan, whatever gets built first, is a step-by-step program of making school facilities so that they anticipate changes in education that are desired by your educators and your community, that they anticipate those changes, even if you're not doing those things right now, you highly likely will be because we see the trends. And so we want to make future-proof buildings. We don't want to make new versions of the same old thing. So that's my position here. I guess that's my position on that, and that's my position here as a team member. As Louis mentioned, I do do this work. This is my full-time job. I do this work across the country. And I'm working, I'm regularly working in a couple of other countries. Right now, I'm working in China and in Colombia. And in Rhode Island, I've done work in about 20 different districts, from Westerly on the very far lower-left corner to Barrington, and then nearby here, Providence, East Providence, and North Providence, and Smithfield, just to drop a few names. So I do know the territory locally, although I certainly rely on Louis and his office for greater knowledge of that. But I bring to the process knowledge of trends and innovations from lots of different places. So what we have worked out, and just met with the superintendent this afternoon, we had a great meeting with the leadership last week, or two weeks ago, and we are planning to have two days of visioning workshops in the middle of September. They are the 13th and 14th. And I believe you have a meeting on the 13th, right? Yeah. So we'll be back to report what happened on the first day. These are being planned in a manner that I have found to be most effective, and we will expect to have 30 to 50 school and community stakeholders crafting these ideas, assessing your current systems, your current best practices, projecting ideas for next practices. But those participants would include not only the leadership from the district and all the different buildings, and teachers from those different buildings, but also students, and parents, and community leaders, and business leaders, people who know kids from other points of view, and most likely adults, all of whom have had kids. And my role is to be the facilitator of this phenomenal think tank of Cumberland-focused people. And in the agendas that we're going to carry out, these are all-day sessions, we will recognize the unique characteristics of the schools and the community, and then we're going to address issues that are inherent to feeding the master plan. And in doing that, we will be developing ideas of how education should be developed. Now, I don't want to make this sound as if we're throwing everything out. We're not, because you're doing a lot of good stuff. We're going to acknowledge programs that are effective. We're going to fess up and identify things that need work, certainly in terms of facilities, but in terms of educational deliveries. And we're going to look at a number of things, since this is feeding the master plan, we're going to look at a number of issues that really work directly to feed that plan. So it includes things like addressing, identifying ideal school size, addressing the number of transitions that students go through in their pre-K or K-12 experience, looking at how grade levels are grouped, and looking at those relative to developmental age of kids, and natural groupings for kids. Those three pieces right there are major parts of a puzzle of rationalizing and making as appropriate as possible building concepts. Now, when that is done, and that's an educational and community concept, it does have to be correlated with existing facilities, and this is where things get really interesting. Because what we will be able to bring to the master plan from your community and educator concepts is a real sense of what's ideal, and then we will make it real and practical by working through how it applies to buildings. It's better to establish a set of goals, knowing that they will be adjusted, than to have no goals whatsoever and let decisions all be made based on circumstances of facilities. So I commented that education is in rapid change. I would say that the leading edge of innovation in education is in rapid change. There's some things in education that move very, very slowly. Statewide mandated curriculums, to name one. Let me just comment on a couple of things that one might call trends. Although that word is an awkward word because it implies that, like, everybody's doing it, and not everybody's doing it. Leading thinkers are doing it. Teacher collaboration. Traditionally, teachers have taught alone. We've only started to collaborate between specialists and teachers, but there's considerable thinking and value now placed on teachers collaborating because having two adults in a larger room with a larger group of students is actually better for the adults and better for the students. There's more choice for kids, there's more people they can relate to, there's the role modeling that goes with watching adults who are collaborating. Hasn't happened in our traditional schools. Small learning communities. We have tended to make our buildings with long rows of classrooms and corridors that nobody wants to own. Now, we're wanting to make our buildings so that they develop relationships, so that the buildings strategically locate people in the right-sized groups so that they can get to know each other better, and that they feel safer. And we all know that learning goes up when kids feel safer, and when kids are better known by their teachers. Interdisciplinary learning. Our system is plagued by the concept that was developed in the early 20th century, late 19th century, that we would make school just like the Model T Ford assembly line. We would take all of learning, all of knowledge, and we would slice and dice it into little components, and we would have specialists apply it, so particularly visible in high school. So just as the Model T Ford had one person putting on the headlight, and one person putting on the bumper, and one person putting on the wheels, we have one person teaching science, and one person teaching math, and one person teaching English, and they never talk to each other, and they never share knowledge about kids, because they don't share the science with kids. So interdisciplinary learning could bring math and science together, could bring phys ed and biology together with consumer science and have a wellness program. Or we could bring art and English together and have kids explore the classics through graphics rather than words. So there's lots of possibilities that then tune in to what I would call the whole child, and make learning more relevant and interesting for many, many kids. And it is a shift from passive learning to active learning, kids doing stuff. And it is a shift that recognizes that movement has to be part of learning, because the physical body needs movement, the brain needs movement in order to stay awake. And we have not had movement in our schools, not on an intentional basis. So those are sampling. This is an exciting time. I did make reference to the Model T Ford assembly line. Our forefathers, who invented our system 125 years ago, looked admiringly at the Model T Ford assembly line, and we still are carrying the DNA from that. The question is, do we want to continue to do that, or do we want to look ahead and figure out what's appropriate for us, and then future-proof building concepts so that it will anticipate and support that? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Whose is that? Okay, just a couple of things to add to what Louis and Frank have shared with us this evening. So there are a couple really important things for us to do in order to be in a position to take advantage of this opportunity. The first thing that we need to do is submit this letter of intent. The letter of intent has to be submitted by Wednesday, the 15th. But before we can submit the letter, we need to, and again, this is by regulation, we need to hire Toronto architects to guide this work. Frank Locker will be working with Toronto. So the reason that we have scheduled the Tuesday special meeting is for you to decide as a committee, you know, the next step. So ideally, we hire Toronto architects on Tuesday, we submit the letter on Wednesday, and then we've already had two meetings to start the planning for the visioning sessions on September 13th and 14th. We would then need to identify the 30 to 50 stakeholders that will participate in that process. Frank has already shared a wealth of information about the process, and I have some really interesting things, and I'm actually excited to share with these 30 to 50 folks who'll be a part of this process, some really exciting things for us to review and consider moving forward. So we're on the fast track. We have some important decisions to make. We've already had two meetings, one rather lengthy phone conference, and we spent a lot of time together, Frank, Louis, and I, talking about next steps. And I really think it's been stated that this referendum is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So, you know, it's interesting because as students, we've all gone through pretty much the same process, and it really hasn't changed a whole lot. It's changed some. We all know that technology has changed our world, and it's changed the way that we teach kids a little bit. But this is an opportunity for us to really think outside of the box, and I think the biggest challenge for us is going to be doing just that. And fortunately, we have both Louis and Frank who have experience in doing the most innovative things in education, and they're going to be working with us. So with that said, I think we need to focus on the timeline. Hopefully, we'll support Toronto architects in helping us to guide this work. We'll make that decision on Tuesday, we'll get the letter in on Wednesday, and then we'll start planning. And we're going to need your help in identifying those 30 to 50 stakeholders, which will include school people, municipal people. We all know that Senator Pearson, Representative McLaughlin have been a part of this process. Senator Pearson played a significant role in getting us to this point. We talked about getting students involved. Students have to be an exciting, I think, part of that process. We need to include them. So that's pretty much where we are, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mike, can we lower these things down? I can whisper. All right, thank you. A little bit up, a little bit more, Mike. There we go. All right, excellent. Yes, I concur, Mr. Mitchell. Excellent presentation. I look forward to the meeting on Tuesday. I'm sure the gentleman will be there as well? No? Okay, just, no problem. All right, excellent. Next, any questions on the committee? Mr. Demodica?
Mr. Chair, the work being done by Frank is required by RIDE. It's a new requirement by them in order for any school district in the state to tap into this $250 million first bond issue. So what he does for us will move the district forward in regards to getting the approval of some RIDE as well, so that as Mr. Pearson has tried to do, us be one of the first, the second, you know, school districts in the state to get in line to get this money for our district. So I can't wait till we get going.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Demodica. Mr. Dennen?
I have a question, and I don't know who could address it. I think the work that Frank described is work that we all want to jump on and do, and it's a great opportunity for us. My question is, RIDE is requiring it, and how long is the work you do good for? Does that make sense? Before they would require us to do it again? Because one of the concerns I have is that the bond may or may not pass, the state bond, and then the local bond may or may not pass. And then even if all of that passes, the town council may not have money for a number of years to do work. Does that make sense?
Good question. I would say that the work that I'm going to lead, I'm not going to do it all, you're going to do a lot of it, is portable. It will last, it will have a good, long shelf life. However, the best shelf life comes from the district taking the vision and starting to enact those programs. Let's say it's teacher collaboration and working together, starting it in all schools, not waiting for state money. If you wait and you don't get a bond passed right away, and it's five years, then it's going to die, because it's not in anybody's memory. So the viability of it is actually the responsibility of the district.
Thank you.
If I could just take two minutes, I'll give you some example of legs of these programs. So I did visioning for an elementary school in Danvers, Mass. last year. It was one, no, you can't hear me. It was one-
Mike, can we turn? Okay.
It was one elementary school. And they were concerned about, because it was going to be one building that was built, they were concerned about, wait, wait, we've got five elementary schools, what are we going to do? So they invited other elementary school principals and educators, teachers to the visioning. And so we created a vision focused on one school, but we knew it could apply to others. And then when we wrapped that up, they said, hey, wait a minute, does this apply to the middle school and the high school? And I said, well, it can. Let's take the principals and move, not the school principals, the principals of the visioning, and then move it to a forum of middle school and high school leaders and teachers, and have them review it, embrace it, adopt it. And now it has become a K-12 vision, and it's now getting built into the Danvers Strategic Plan. That's going to give it permanence. I'm going back in the fall and doing professional staff development with the teachers to basically roll out the concepts. They're not going to get their building built for three years, but they're going to be off and running really quickly. That's going to stick.
I'm afraid to talk. Hello, hello? I don't think I, can anyone hear me? Okay, well, you can. I think it sounds like some of the deliverables out of the working sessions that you'll have could be done for free, like, in terms of, like, we wouldn't need buildings to, changes to buildings to implement them. They're more process, or, you know, having teachers work together doesn't require an $82 million bond.
True. However, if you look at the way traditional buildings are made, they present all kinds of barriers to people working together. Classrooms are built in isolation with one door. You can't get from one to the other because there's a concrete block wall between them. Cutting openings can go a long way. That would be an easy fix. I call it duct tape. Chainsaw and duct tape work. Really simple, but that gets you by. And in fact, what you really want to do is, you do not want to wait and have a whole lot of money assigned to makeover a building. You want to try things out as trials, and yes, they're going to be ad hoc, and you want to pick the teachers and the administrators who are passionate about it, and they will surmount the obstacles. But at least you'll get a feeling for what it's like. So teacher collaboration, let's have some math teachers start working with science teachers and have an integrated program. Let's have history teachers work with English teachers. Let's have art teachers in the elementary school work with all the teachers. Let's- Let's, you know, Picasso said, we're all born artists, and then we go to school. That's what our system has done for most of our kids. Let's turn that around.
Very good questions, Mr. Dennan? Mike, okay. Next item on the agenda, chairperson's report. Discussion of Cumberland High School Band Uniforms Purchase. Mr. Demodica, did you want to lead this off?
Sure. I asked fiscal to put this on our agenda so that we could discuss getting uniforms for the band. We have an award-winning chorus, we have an award-winning band, and we're wearing polo shirts and crowdfunding for sneakers or shoes, or whatever it may be, and we're looking for equipment. So I want us to have a discussion about funding the uniforms, and I'm glad they brought one here, because it gets us the public to see it. I saw it in the picture.
You guys can come up to the podium. Sorry, Mr. Demodica.
So we can talk, I know we had questions, how long, Mr. Hess, how long do they last, and so forth, and cleaning, and what we're getting, and, you know, we need to have that conversation, I think.
Stuff down? Is that what you're doing? You're getting more stuff to bring down? Okay, Mr. Farochi, could you, yeah, could you come up to the microphone? There we go, thank you. Hello, welcome. Thank you for showing up, coming to our meeting. What can you tell us why these uniforms should be justified for the band? Just give us an overview of, well, not a bad word, but, you know, talk to us about the uniforms. Hey, how many events are we attending a year?
So I started here five years ago. The band was small, thirty-five, forty kids, not a lot of motivation. Since then, rapid expansion. As mentioned, we do crowd source to fund a lot of the equipment, you know, something as simple as one tuba, six thousand bucks. I've had instruments come from across the country, used, trying to do it on a budget. The kids are into it. We've given almost, thank you, we've given almost 5,000 in scholarships. We are the face of the town when we're in the Autumn Fest Parade, when we're at URI for the Band Day, Arnold Mills Parade, we're out there. We are in the polo shirts, which I think look okay for a budget, for a budget, uniform, the black pants. We earned sixty-five pairs of black marching band shoes, it's a specialized shoe with a rolled heel. So we do work very hard for the program, the kids work hard for the program, for the vision I've laid out in front of them. About three years ago, I had this made. This was actually one uniform that they did donate to see how we like it, if we're into the design. I've designed it so that it will be in style, because this may be around until 2050. If we take care of it, the last time we bought the uniforms was probably the late eighties. It might have been either Colesville Canyon or Ted Schrebus was the band director in the seventies. So it seems that in the past, when we purchased the uniforms, they've lasted maybe twenty, thirty years. I'm going to make sure we take very good care of them for my entire tenure here, if these are funded. And this will put us on pace with Blackstone Millville, the hottest bands around. We already rival URI's band. They have 120 members. We're approaching 80 members already with this band. It's hard to keep up, there's so many that come in. But this will really put us on an even field with those other competitive programs from the area.
Thank you. I'm afraid. Is it one size fits all?
So that is a medium. There are different sized jackets. That's one part of the uniform, small, medium, large, extra-large, double XL. So I would size the kids, and I would have to estimate for they're going to grow, right? So you order a few more than the kids that you have anticipating the changes in them. You have the shako, which is the band hat that's in front of the jacket there. You have a plume, which people like to say is like the feathery, you know, insert into the top of the hat, the plume. Then it also comes with a pair of long pants that go over the shoulders. And we do have those sixty-five pairs of the shoes, so that's at least part of the way there, you know, little by little. Even those sixty-five shoes cost us maybe 2,000, 2,500, but we got those, and, you know. The thing is that we raise a lot of money, but we need that money already for transportation, busing, it's thousands of, thousands a year. Like I said, I feel it's important to give out scholarships. We have two students here who are actually recipients of the Christopher Rankin Scholarship and the CHS Band Scholarship. That's important for me, I feel, and for the program. But we have so many needs that when I come across these funds, like, these parades are fundraisers, it goes right to, we need a new baritone, you know, we need a new meliphone, tubas, all of that. So it's tough, because musicality is first, so that's where the money usually goes. Yeah, I got to order more shoes. There are some kids right now who are waiting for their shoes, but they wear the closest thing that they can. Or some of them buy it, and they say when they grow out, they'll donate the shoes. So, you know, we have some families that can do that, too. A hundred uniforms would put everybody that we have. Yeah, yeah, so I have to figure out, you know, the bell curve of the sizes, and then estimate for the growth that inevitably just, they just keep coming. I mean, 25 freshmen this year, that's, you know, it's huge. It's a lot of kids in the band.
Excellent, okay. Any?
One of the questions that the school committee man, Mr. Hess, had was, is what does it take to maintain them yearly, and then getting back to that curve? So if we got 100 this year, would we need to get 10 the following year just to, you know, to keep, I mean, again, we have- How many kids are coming in from the freshman class?
About 25 that are in the band right now. It's my best estimation from the rosters I've been given, about 25 for the freshmen this year. And just to put that in context, their graduating class was 10 from the bands. Now we have 25, right? So, yeah, 100 would cover it, would cover everybody this year. Everybody this year would get a uniform, full-on, ready to go. After they're produced, of course, they, this company's very reputable. The production on these is like half a year. We would not have these for the fall season, which is when marching band marches. These would be coming out for 2019. That's when we'd get to finally unveil, they'd arrive probably around, I'd hope, maybe February. They were backed up last time that I called them.
In the cleaning, how, you know?
Oh, right, maintenance. So the shako comes with a box, which the plume also goes in. There is a garment bag that you can put it all right in, and we'd need some kind of shelving, you know, racks, maybe a plastic casing. And it would need to be kept out of anything that's like a mechanical room or anything like that. When I got here, I found the uniforms that we used to have. They had a date from a dry cleaner, 2001. They were in a mechanical room, a pipe burst. They were totally destroyed. I have like, maybe 10 left, and they're, you would not want to see the kids in these, you know, I don't think it would be healthy to put them in those, so, you know.
So we have you scheduled to come in and address the next fiscal subcommittee meeting. Could you update your sheet? I saw a sheet with some numbers on it. If you could update that sheet as well in regards to the rack, things like that, that you need to get this going. And then, obviously, our principal will have to find a better place than a mechanical room. Did the educational consultant leave? Because it sounded like he could find it or build it. And we get this moving. I think this is time come that we started to do it. I know there's a 501(c)(5) that's being created for this, and I'd like to see us fund the uniforms this year, get it going, let the 501(c)(5) continue to fundraise for equipment and buses, and you can't, you know, be in Cumberland and not be proud of what these guys are doing. And then we got, you know, let's move the next step. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Mr. Costa?
Yeah, just to advocate a little bit more for the band uniforms, you know, we have a very strong system in place, because it is a financial chance that you're taking here and buying the uniforms, and you don't want them walking out of the building, especially when graduates leave. But just like anything else that we have, whether it's sports uniforms or books, there are systems in place to guarantee that we get those back. And, I mean, I just think that this truly does give this band an identity that's grown year after year after year, an identity that they've worked very hard. Even this summer, we got a call from a school who was hosting a midsummer graduation, and they wanted the Cumberland High School Band to play at their graduation, so their popularity is growing, and I just think that when they are walking in a parade or playing at an event, I think the kids here deserve this. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any? Yeah. Any further?
May I have a student or two just give their two cents on, you know, what the band means to them? This is Dan Pierce.
Mr. Pierce?
Like Mr. Perch said, I'm Dan Pierce. I graduated in 2017. I was, I came in when Mr. Farochi also came in. Like he said, when we came in, me and Su-Hail both were one of the first freshmen that Mr. Farochi had, and there was about 30 of us, more or less, and we didn't really have a uniform. We had a jacket that we wore at football games, and that was about it. And I actually still have that jacket, it's in my car. But that jacket was all we had, and since then, he has purchased the polos, which is a great, like, warm weather uniform, but this just adds to the next level of competitiveness and just the overall, the atmosphere. There's a different atmosphere to look out at a field or a parade, you're looking down the street, and all of a sudden, you see these blue feathers coming at you, it gets your attention, and then you're like, oh, who are they? And then you look at this uniform, and you're like, wow. Cumberland High School Band, they look great. And the cool thing with these uniforms is they will last for, as long as they are taken care of, they will last for a long time, and they're the new design. So I, that's really all I have. I personally believe that these uniforms will be a great addition, and I believe, Su-Hail, you want to say something real quick? Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Su-Hail Abetal, like Dan had said earlier. I also graduated in 2017 with Dan, and I was Mr. Farochi's first class that he taught. I started playing in Cumberland Band when I was a fifth grader, so as early as you could start, I started playing the trumpet. And as I got to the high school, I went to the French horn. And, yeah, so at that point, you know, I was really, really dedicated in being in band, and there was nothing more that I loved than, besides the sports that I was involved in, band was also my, you know, my safe place from whatnot. And, yeah, so as I got to my junior and senior year of high school, I joined the football team. I was the starting kicker of the varsity squad. And being on the football team and traveling around the state up and down, playing against other teams, I noticed that, you know, schools, especially in Southern Rhode Island, I'm talking about Portsmouth, they looked really well. Not only did they play well, but I think a lot of people take them very serious due to their uniforms. And, you know, as much as I love putting on that blue jacket that Dan had mentioned for football games, you know, as a little freshman and little sophomore, I think the uniforms definitely would add to the intensity of the Cumberland High School Band. And, yeah, definitely something that I hope you guys think about. I know you already, just by the look of it, I think it says a lot about us. But, yeah, that's what I'd just like to add from what everybody has already said before. Thank you.
Thank you, excellent. Anything else to add? Any school committee members? Mr. Dennan?
Again, I'm afraid to talk, but, okay, great. Mr. Farochi, when you, so this is your, you're going into your fifth school year, is that right?
So I'm actually going to be a Step Seven teacher. I started here with the little kids. So I did kindergarten through fifth grade, and I loved that job totally. I had talked to Tony Demana about where I eventually want to be, which is the marching band, high school band, and college band. And actually, Mr. Mitchell that year said, you know, would you like to do that here? I said, if you'd like me to, absolutely, I will. So now it's been five full years with the high school, and then I'm going on to my sixth year here at the-
So when you, when you were brought up to be the band director, was there any, did you discuss any plan for, you know, growing the band and then getting uniforms? Like, are we in line with your original plan?
Yes. So I did create a very ambitious plan with Phil Thornton, right? That first year, that he had, that he asked me to do that. Super ambitious plan, and the uniforms were in the five-year plan, which is what I originally had, was that five-year plan. Uniforms were the last step, being that we need, they need to play instruments, right? There's no point in having a uniform if they don't have instruments. What I didn't, although I did anticipate growth, I didn't anticipate so much growth. And the funds that I thought I would be able to save for uniforms ended up falling very short. The original quote I had was for 60 uniforms, and that was because I only had 50 kids. So now, here we are, I'm on the next three-year plan. These are rolled over into our new plan, yes. This is totally in line with where I wanted us to be.
And just one other question. Uniforms are important, and I think, you know, we haven't voted or anything, we'll decide on that, but are there other needs that you have as a band to, that either go hand in hand with your growth or the uniforms? Like, you know, I would like to see a kind of a complete picture of what the needs are. I know, like, a tuba is really expensive, and maybe that's not in your need list, you know, but are there any other things? And you don't need to answer that now. When you go to fiscal, it might be good to have that.
Yeah, I could give you 30 seconds on that right now. Yes, totally do. We have gotten at least a small budget each year, in which helps with some of those needs, the brass, it's a lot of brass. Bigger, even bigger picture with the marching band, based off of where I used to work, Killingley, Connecticut, I was their drum line instructor. So I was on a staff. A stipend staff would be ideal. Obviously, they were, you know, they have a lot of cash in that district. They had a band director, assistant band director, brass instructor, woodwind instructor, color guard instructor. It was a big staff. I don't expect that. But as it gets bigger, I'm still one band director, and with 80 kids, like, luckily, I have motivated kids that come back to rehearsals and help. He's, Dan's going to be a music educator, and I get student teachers time to time, so I make do. But I think that would be the next big thing, too, would be like stipend staff positions. That would be a big need, yes.
And are those typically other music instructors in the district, or are they people from outside?
Not necessarily within the district. For instance, I didn't live in Killingley, Connecticut, or even worked there before I was hired. So the band director is generally the band director, the concert band director in this, you know, who plays that role during the school day concert band. Marching band's exclusively after school. So that would be me, and then I would bring in whoever I felt was qualified that could do the work, that could attend the competitions and the band camp. And, you know, the sky's the limit. Color guard would be the next thing, too. You know, the rifles and the flags, that's super cool, too.
Yeah, so I went to Cumberland High and, back in the Stone Age, and-
Schrebus, was it with the-
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Schrebus was the band director, but we also had people come in who were, who played some of those roles, and they were not employ, well, they were not teachers in the district. They, you know, like a woodwind expert, or, yeah. So, okay, great, thank you.
Excellent. Any further questions?
Super proud of this band, and that's all I, that's all I have.
Awesome. I love the passion. Excellent. All right, thank you. If you guys got to take off, if you want to grab it, you know. If you guys got to take off, if you want to grab it, you know. All right, next item on the agenda, fiscal year 2019 budget update. Nothing more than, no more of an update than anything that's already on this agenda. We'll move forward. Next item on the agenda, reports of standing committees, payment of bills. Mr. Dematika.
Mr. Chairman, we have two sets of vouchers tonight, one for the 2017-2018 year on the amount of $776,081.24. It passed upstairs on the three-to-zero vote on Tuesday and I would move passage.
Mr. Dematika, one more time on that amount? Mr. Dematika makes a motion for the passage of bills in the amount of $776,081.24?
Correct.
Mr. Fiorillo, second. Do I have, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it, six-zero.
Next one is the 2018-2019 school year. The amount is $599,764.37 and that passed upstairs on Tuesday on a three-to-zero vote and I would move passage.
Mr. Dematika makes passage, recommends passage. Do I have a, of the payment of bills, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it, six-zero. Thank you. Mr. Dematika, fiscal, next item on the agenda, fiscal management subcommittee update.
So we did meet on Tuesday. We got the business office monthly report. We talked a little bit about facilities. We had a couple of contracts to bring to you tonight that are properly funded and then a couple of resolutions for some work done at Gavin and J.J.M. Cumberland Hill School and the gymnasiums at McCourt and Wellness. And we did talk briefly about the band uniforms and we had some discussion whether we wanted to put the video cameras on the outside of the school buses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dematika. Next item on the agenda, policy and procedures, subcommittee update. Mr. Fiorillo. And the next meeting date, Mr. Fiorillo? Two weeks, all right. We'll get an update then. Next item on the agenda, achievement and communications, subcommittee update. Mr. Denny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The achievement and communications subcommittee did meet last Tuesday, so a week ago, and we had a few items on the agenda. The primary agenda item was talking about the high school and the two-year academic plan, so this is a continuation of a series of meetings that we've had over the past few months. We started with the elementary schools, went to the middle schools, and now we've had two meetings to talk about the high school. We talked about, kind of, Mr. Demana led the discussion about what he saw as the top priorities in the high school. We talked a little bit about standardized test scores and SAT, PSAT scores as well. The other part of our discussion was talking about communication and in particular, back-to-school communication and the bond referendum, communication around the bond referendum. In terms of back-to-school communication, one of the things that we've heard, we said we heard from our constituents, mostly parents, are that they need information and it's helpful to know when information will be available. And one of the things that we talked to Mr. Mitchell about was kind of setting a date for when information will be available. And Mr. Mitchell, if you saw the Bob talk, that was at least a few days ago, August 17th is the target date for bus routes, teacher assignments. I think those are the big items, right? Bus routes and teacher assignments. We also talked about back-to-school activities, so trying to coordinate communication about when orientations are or Chromebook days. And I think we've all seen that in the last week, those things have been announced to parents. The principals have done a good job of getting the message out. I think the, we really want it to come out sooner rather than later. So I think that it's always going to be a yearly struggle to kind of get information out sooner, but as of now, I think all the information's getting out there. The last item that we talked about was sort of informing the community about school lunch and how, sign your student up for free and reduced lunch if they qualify, but also how to use the charging system because we know we've had a big problem with that. And we're hoping that that problem is minimized this coming year. So we want to make sure that parents are aware of how the system works, that they are responsible for any charges that their child makes against their account and, you know, how that, you know, how the whole thing just generally works and how they can add money and all that. So I don't know if that information's come out yet. I think that might be part of the August 17th date and that's really it. Did I miss anything? I think we covered it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Next item on the agenda, comments from the public. Anyone like to make a comment, pick up to the podium, okay? Next item on the agenda, new business. Discussion and/or vote to approve employee contracts. Mr. Mitchell, do we have anything separate on this?
Well, we have two contracts for you to approve. I think what we usually do is you approve the contracts and then we can introduce the individuals who we would like to fill those positions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Dematika?
Mr. Chairman, these were heard in fiscal upstairs. They are funded for the school year coming up and they passed on a three-to-zero vote on both of them. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Dematika. Assistant principal for teaching and learning, Cumberland High School. Pleasure of the committee.
We'll make a motion. We approve the first one, which is for, can I say his name, Mr.?
Fiorillo?
Yes, I can say his name. For Patrick Sullivan. And it did pass upstairs on a three-to-zero vote. Thank you.
So Mr. Dematika and Mr. Fiorillo makes a motion to approve the assistant, say it again, Mr. Fiorillo. Okay. Mr. Fiorillo withdraws. Mr. Dematika makes a motion to approve the assistant principal for teaching and learning at the Cumberland High School. Do I have a second? Mr. Fiorillo makes a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it, six-zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, assistant principal pathways director, Cumberland High School.
And this one, it was heard upstairs in fiscal as well. It passed on a three-to-zero vote for head of Delfino for the pathways position. It's something that the superintendent and actually Mrs. Delfino have spoken to us about the pathways we're going forward with and that we wanted a coordinator for this, so it did pass upstairs and I moved passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dematika. Mr. Dematika makes a motion for the passage of the assistant principal pathways director, Cumberland High School. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, six-zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve appointment of assistant principal for teaching and learning at Cumberland High School. Mr. Dematika. All right, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure to introduce Patrick Sullivan to all of you and everyone in the audience. Patrick comes to us from the Barrington School Department. He taught social studies for nine years before becoming a school counselor. He has been a school counselor for the last ten years. He was the unanimous choice by the interviewing team that was interview one. And then he met with Mr. Demana and me and we had a rather lengthy conversation about learning and teaching. And he is very interested in taking on this really important role. In fact, and certainly he can let you know, one of the reasons, you know, the reason why he decided to apply for this position, but I think he was intrigued by the way that we're organized at the high school, having a principal and two assistant principals for teaching and learning, who can totally dedicate their time all day and every day to support improved learning in the high school. So he has been actively involved in a number of initiatives in the Barrington School system. And here's the thing, and I think his letter captures what we heard when we met with him, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, and he says in his letter, "I'm a firm believer in a growth mindset and feel students are capable of extraordinary things if the proper structures are in place." So he definitely is, his vision is aligned with ours. Had a really good conversation with him. Think he understands the importance of leadership on teaching and learning. So I am recommending the appointment of Patrick Sullivan for this important position of assistant principal for teaching and learning.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell? Pleasure of the committee, a motion? Mr. Dematika makes a motion to approve the appointment of the assistant principal for teaching and learning at Cumberland High School. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dennen. All in favor? Against? The eyes have it, six-zero. Welcome?
If I may, Patrick Sullivan is here. I'd like to introduce Patrick to you. And Patrick, not to put you on the spot, you want to come up and just say hi? Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. It's very nice to meet all of you and as Mr. Mitchell said, it was really an exciting opportunity for me. I finished up the program and administration from Providence College in May and had an opportunity to look at other school districts in terms of what they offered. And as was spoken earlier, the structure that was here at Cumberland High School was quite appealing. I've been at Barrington High School for nineteen years, so that's been my entire career in education. So it took this type of position. It also took what I felt was a really great school administration that I had been familiar with prior, that I'm excited about working for, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to get started on Tuesday.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome.
His first day will be the administrative retreat on Tuesday.
Excellent.
It'll be an exciting experience for him.
Mr. Mitchell, I would like to offer if the assistant principal of teaching and learning, Cumberland High School and the assistant principal pathways director would like to come up and say anything?
We haven't appointed that person.
Oh, okay. I apologize. All right, new, discussion of vote to approve the appointment.
Let me introduce, provide some information about Heather, if I may.
All right. Okay, go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Mitchell.
No, it's okay. It is my pleasure to recommend Heather Delfino for this new position that we have created. You all know Heather. She is a veteran educator in the district. She has been a world language teacher for several years. In fact, before becoming an administrator, Heather was the content leader for world languages. And you all know because you've had an opportunity to hear her present on the work that she has led on pathways. It really is quite impressive. She really has taken a lead in getting all of the four pathways that have been approved by the Department of Ed in place. It is amazing how much time and effort and coordination and organization that requires and lots of teachers were involved in that and she really led everyone in getting these things approved. So she has already done a tremendous amount of work. She is as knowledgeable right now as anyone in the district, probably more so than anyone else in this pathways movement that is taking place in the state. She was the unanimous choice of the interviewing committee. I know her work because we have had a chance to talk on many occasions. So it is my pleasure to recommend Heather Delfino for the new position of pathways, assistant principal pathways director at Cumberland High School.
So pleasure of the committee, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of pathways director.
Mr. Fiorillo makes a motion to approve the appointment of the assistant principal pathways director at Cumberland High School. Do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion by Mr. Dennen?
Just have a question.
Mr. Dennen?
Mr. Mitchell, this is a new position, so I think, I think we understand what the pathways mean and how this assistant principal for pathways director will function that role. Does this also have anything to do with guidance?
Yes. When we were creating the job description for this position, one of the things that we considered was supervision of guidance because there is a definite link between the work of guidance counselors and the work that Heather has done, the pathways work that Heather has done. So we felt that there was a natural connection there between the two. There is going to definitely have to be some coordination. So it just made sense that that would be included, that supervision of guidance would be considered as part of this role. And, you know, to be honest, I don't even know that this is the time or place for us to, for me to even suggest this, but, you know, I think we have a seasoned veteran guidance counselor with, as the other assistant principal, and I think we need to, it would make sense to somehow utilize his experience and expertise somehow in the administration at the high school. So we'll be, you know, we'll be thinking about that and, you know, Principal Costa and I, along with Mr. Demana, we meet on a regular basis and these are the kinds of conversations that we're having. And I think we need to decide what makes the most sense. I don't want to suggest that we're not going to go ahead with the plan that we developed, but I think under the circumstances, we should at least have a conversation about how we could take advantage of Patrick's experience as a guidance counselor as well. So not at the end of the deal, not trying to, you know, make anybody nervous, but I just think that that's a pretty logical thing for us to consider.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify for anybody watching, and we have like hundreds and thousands of people watching from home.
Yes.
But anyone watching that this is a new position, we have those duties, but we're also related to the pathways, which are important, but we're also hoping to beef up guidance through this position as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it, six-zero. Mrs. Delfino, now you can come down, if you would like.
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Diamond Hill Road is the area that's going to cause the problem. We've gotten some notifications from Mr. Anderson Public Works that the Menden Road area is going to be delayed at least until the spring, which will help us some. There is construction on Menden Road also that's going to be happening. We've been at meetings with the Public Works Director, State Department of Transportation, George Stansfield, Police Department. Mr. Mitchell's been involved with those discussions and meetings. So that's what I got with the construction. We really can't give you any great answers about the construction because depending on the timing of when the major disconstruction is going to happen, which really hasn't been determined whether some of it or most of it may be done at night, which would be great. Right now, what we're being told is that Diamond Hill Road is basically utility work. So that's moving back the sidewalks, that they're doing a lot of that at the later hours, maybe not nighttime, but the later hours. But I have traveled Diamond Hill Road and I've seen some backup already up on just past 295 because of the water piping too. So we know it's going to happen. You know, unpredictable, things are going to happen with the traffic. So we will work through it. We'll do the best we can for it. Business manager was just talking to me and possibly gave us an option of parking some of the buses on the north end on some of the school property. That could be an idea we may need to institute if the traffic gets as bad as it could be. But that's still, it's got to be, it's unforeseen. It's an unpredictable what's going to happen with this construction. What I want to tell you is that Durham, in conjunction with Mr. Mitchell, is staying on top of it at every single meeting and making sure we're having at least biweekly meetings with the right people. The Public Works Director's been fantastic. George Stansfield has been fantastic. And that's about the update on the construction that I can give you at this point in time. Now, route, other things, I have some positives. Definitely Durham's bringing four brand-new mini buses will come into effect. Three of them are probably in or ready and ready to roll. And the fourth one will be on the road probably October 1st. It'll probably be delayed about one month. Those are brand, not brand-new mini buses, but new mini buses to the town of Cumberland. It's an upgrade on what we had for mini buses in the town, so that's going to help us. Staffing, we're going to have a driver in every seat. There's no doubt when we start the school year, there will be a driver in every single bus. Not that there were any buses without drivers before, but what I'm saying is we have drivers that will cover every single run. We've had problems in years with shortage of drivers. This year, it doesn't look like we're going to have that problem unless, knock on wood, we have some unexpected things happening that we don't expect, of course, right now. Routing, basically there will, you will not see any major changes to routings. Routes, we're tweaking some. We're taking some stops that we thought were in places that were perfectly sectioned, but when new students come onboard, those get moved around a little bit. The routes will probably be sent to the police department for their okay, probably Monday or Tuesday. And they should be ready to be sent to the school and the papers on the 17th. That's what our target date is to do. So that's the update I have on stuff for busing. I'm here to answer questions.
Mrs. Goggan, go ahead.
So if the routes aren't changing, can you give us a better idea of how much the Diamond Hill Road construction's going to affect, how many buses it's going to affect? Because I imagine there's quite a few it's not going to affect at all, like for one end of, each end of town, there are probably a lot of buses that don't go down that way.
Well, Diamond Hill Road, ironically, there's probably, between all four schools that Diamond Hill Road would probably take care of, because there's routes for Cumberland High School, of course, to North Cumberland. Some McCourt Middle School buses are up that end of Cumberland too and have to come down. You're probably talking in the range of affecting ten to twelve bus runs throughout the all-four schools. Those bus runs could be, I mean, like, it's an unpredictable. We don't know what that traffic's going to be like. In the end run, we might have to reschedule buses to go down like Bear Hill Road to come in the backside of Diamond Hill Road to get around construction. Or there's other ways that we need to do it. So we're definitely going to look at that. We have our routers looking at that. Local team is looking at it very much. We do have routing that happens in Illinois. They're not going to be dealing with the construction part. They're going to be dealing with routes, but not construction part because they're not the local, they don't have the local knowledge. So I'm saying between 12, 14 runs may be affected by, well, all right, I'm sorry. You know, it's still a guess. It's a guess how many runs will be affected because there could be four for the high school, there could be three that were affected for the middle school, and then you've got Cumberland Hill and community that are in that area too. Some buses for Cumberland Hill are on Diamond Hill Road too. The out-of-district students, the school, when I say an out-of-district student, that means a student that is not attending their local elementary school, basically. Those buses will be definitely affected if they're running the Diamond Hill area. Now, if we can get those off of Diamond Hill Road onto like an Aberon Valley Road or one of the side roads to get around construction, we definitely will do that. But those are the buses that are going to be affected.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Mitchell, go ahead.
Somebody else?
I had a couple of questions.
Okay, well, you go ahead. I can wait.
Real quick, Mr. Nevs, so when you're in these meetings with the state and the town and the police department, what are some of the alternatives that they're recommending? Day one, school opens and there's crazy traffic. What are they?
Recommending any alternatives?
What are they, what are they saying? Are they going to have the, have the police stop the traffic and let the buses go by?
As much as they can, they are going to allow the buses through as frequently as they can.
So they're saying the buses will be a priority to get through?
Yes. They have to.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Mitchell.
I was just going to say, just to build on that, I mean, I think we have a meeting scheduled for the 23rd at 10 o'clock. The bus company, Paul, will be there probably with Ann. The police will be involved. There's a gentleman, I believe from the state, who is somehow involved with the actual construction that will be taking place, Bob Anderson, the Public Works Director. So there are a number of individual, I think George Stansfield, I think, is also involved. So there's going to be a meeting on the 23rd at 10 o'clock. And hopefully, we'll get some more specific information about exactly what you're talking about. Like, I do think it's hard to predict how they're going to, you know, how everyone's going to respond to those situations where we have several buses traveling on Diamond Hill Road. And I think having a better feel for the schedule, the time of day where the actual work will get done, I think is a huge part of this conversation. So after the 23rd, we'll have more specific information. We'll share that information with the school committee. In fact, I think our next, our next meeting is on the 23rd, so we'll be able to share some information with you at that time.
Mr. Mitchell, I'll be in Aruba. Mr. Denon will be filling in on that meeting. All right. Thank you, Mr. Nevs. Anyone else? Mr. Denon.
I have a question about the routes. So the routes will be the same this coming year as they were last year, it sounds like. And you're going to wait to see the impact of construction and then change them? Or are we going to proactively change them?
We are tweaking some of the route right now, not because of construction, because of time demands that we had, plus changes in student population and students going to different schools. We have not tweaked the run specifically for construction at this point in time.
Does it make sense to try to tweak them specifically for construction? Like, we know there's going to be construction, so.
Correct.
Can we reroute some buses proactively before they're, because I'm just worried about September, early September, we're going to have a lot of kids late to school and they're going to, parents will say rightfully, like, didn't you foresee this happening? There's known construction.
We are not predicting, we've been told that the traffic concerns should basically be heavier in the springtime than in the fall time. So that's, and we want to kind of see, we're trying to get a guess of how things are going. It's unpredictable. I don't know how many vehicles are going to be on the road. Some vehicles could turn, could try different avenues or different ways cars may be going. I've already seen some type of improvement at the light, the way they've changed the signals at Chapel 4 Corners seems to have adjusted some things, so that's going to help. So definitely there are pieces of the puzzle that have to be put into place before we're going to be able to determine, and other people are going to be able to determine what we need to do.
Excellent. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Nevs. Next item on the agenda, discussion and a vote to rescind teacher non-renewal recommendations. Mrs. Vogel.
Good evening. So we presented to you one recommendation to rescind a non-renewal. And so we would ask that you approve that recommendation.
Thank you, Mrs. Vogel. Pleasure of the committee, a motion to rescind a teacher non-renewal recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Denon makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Demodica. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it, six to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Vogel. Next item on the agenda, discussion and a vote to approve resolutions, SCR 2018-11, amended fiscal year 2018 school budget. Mr. Demodica.
Mr. Chairman, this was heard upstairs on Tuesday with fiscal. Mr. Pignano, throughout the year, has been, and the school committee has been moving money from savings that we got from healthcare, charter tuitions, technology, pension, and state transportation, which amounted to $876,000. And the school committee has taken numerous votes during the year as the year has moved along to move money into different accounts. So this brings the 2017, 2018 budget back as far as where the money went through your vote. The budget didn't change the actual dollar amount, but just we moved line items from one to another. And then this, the ride has also required technology spent in the schools to be actually charged to each school now as well so they can evenly track the numbers versus it all being in the technology department as well. So that's what you have here. It passed upstairs on a three to zero vote, and I would move passage.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the passage of SCR 2018-11, amended fiscal year 2018 school budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, six to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, SC, discussion and a vote for SCPR 8 2018-32, replace hallway ceiling tiles at Garvin Memorial and JJM Cumberland Hill Elementary School.
So, Mr. Chairman, what this was is a resolution authorizing and empowering the school committee to execute a contract with Keller Herciscal Ceilings of Cumberland, Rhode Island, to replace ceiling tiles at Garvin School and JJM McLaughlin. During the year, we had approved a motion, I mean, a resolution previously where the work to do some floor work at Garvin and JJM did not get completed before school started. So we authorized for the work to be completed this summer. When they get in there in June and started doing the work, the Sedesco, Sedesco people came in and said that ceiling tiles in certain areas where they were working needed to be replaced. And the resolution here for the fiscal note was dated June 17, 2018. It's coming us, back to us late in the year because of the way our meeting schedule is done. And they were given, or they want to give them the go-ahead to complete this work and charge it to the 2017, 18 budget because the fiscal notice here and they authorized the, for them to start looking at that work then. So it passed upstairs in a three to zero vote, and I would move passage.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the passage of SCPR 8-2018-32, replace hallway ceiling tiles. I have a second by Mr. Fiorillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it, six to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and a vote to approve resolution SCPR 8 2018-33, refinish and paint lines in gymnasiums at Joseph L. McCourt Middle School and Cumberland High School Wellness Center.
Again, Mr. Chair, this was heard upstairs on Tuesday night. What this is, is a resolution to have Ocean State flooring paint and refinish the gym floor at McCourt and the Wellness Center as well, not to exceed, it was, original amount was $18,720. The fiscal subcommittee amended that and added $11,965 to it. Behind the stage here, which the public can't see, is wood that's been left over from doing the brand-new flooring at North Cumberland Middle School and getting that done. And we're going to have the stage done here as well. It's in deplorable condition. There's duct tape. There's wood filler here in the floor. Needs to be fixed and changed. So they've given us a price to do that as well. It's the preferred flooring company that Sedesco uses when we, when they use them around the country, I should say, around this area here. We've used them in the past. And again, this would be charged to the 2017, 18 budget through Sedesco's budget that we have with them, the money. And it passed upstairs in a three to zero vote, amended vote, was for, the total amount was $30,685. They are ready and willing to start completing, this will bring all our gyms that we have completed. McCourt, from what we're told, is the 50-year-old gym that hadn't been changed in that amount of time. It's taken a lot of work to get that done. We just did lighting at the Wellness Center, and that floor hasn't been changed, done since the building was built. And so we're updating these floors as we, best we can. So it did pass upstairs on the three to zero vote, and I would move passage.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the passage of SCPR 8 2018-33. I have a second by Mr. Fiorillo.
I'm sorry, I have a question. My resolution here is only for $18,000, so do we have to make an amendment or is that another?
We amended it upstairs on the, on the floor. I'm not sure, Mr. Adams, how we have to do that. We amended the resolution from $18,720 to $30,685 so we could have this stage done as well.
So then fiscal approved it as amended, but this committee would have to make an amendment, the same amendment?
All right.
Okay.
If the committee so chooses. I'm not directing the committee to make an amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I would move passage of, that we amend SCPR 8 2018-33, change the amount from $18,720 and add the amount of $30,685. But we also need to add in here to include the stage here in the high school.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the amended SCPR 8 2018-33 from, go ahead. To amend from $18,720 to $30,685. I have a second by Mr. Fiorillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it, six to zero.
I would make a motion to approve SCPR 8 2018-33 as amended to award the contract to Ocean State Flooring of Blackstone in the amount not to exceed $30,685 and to be charged to the 2017, 18 budget through Sedesco. Thank you.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the passage of SCPR 8 2018-33 as amended. A second by Mr. Fiorillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Passes six to zero. Thank you. Against? It passes, six to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, personnel recommendations. Mrs. Vogel, welcome again. Mrs. Vogel, can we do all these at once?
Yeah, so obviously, this is hiring time, so I have a lot of them. Did you want me to just?
Yeah, why not?
So first one is a retirement. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the retirement of John Lucina, custodian days at Cumberland High School, effective August 24th of 2018. A resignation. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the resignation of Abigail Runland, special educator at Joseph L. McCourt Middle School, effective June 30th of 2018. I have a number of leave of absences. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the FMLA leave of Rose Fauscher, grade six teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective August 28, 2018, with an anticipated return date of October 15th, 2018. The unpaid leave of Laura Hennessy, grade two teacher at Community School, with an anticipated leave date of January 16, 2019, through the remainder of the 2018-19 school year. Unpaid leave of Kayla Lewis, special educator BF Norton Elementary School, effective 20, I'm sorry, August 28th, 2018, for the 2018-19 school year. Christine Martin, secondary mathematics teacher at Joseph L. McCourt Middle School, effective August 28th, 2018, for the 2018-2019 school year. FMLA leave of Judith Reddahan, grade six teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective August 28th, 2018, with an anticipated return date of October 26th, 2018. FMLA leave of Jessica Rock, art teacher at Cumberland High School, effective August 28th, 2018, with an anticipated return date of January 25th, 2019. And the FMLA leave of Jennifer Rogers, PE APE health teacher at Cumberland Hill Elementary School, effective August 28th, 2018, with an anticipated return date of October 15th, 2018. So now I have appointments.
Okay. Mrs. Vogel.
Keep going, or you wanna stop?
I don't see, we can keep going, yeah.
Okay. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the appointment of Katie Cosmano, social worker for the Cumberland School Department, with an effective date of August 28, 2018. She's a step seven teacher. Christian Kuti, grade five teacher at BF Norton Elementary School, with an effective date of August 28, 2018. He's step three. Alicia Di Stefani, special education coordinator. She is a current employee. She has been promoted to this position. This position is a stipended position, which also has, so it has a $7,000 stipend, plus her current step 10, which is what she already is. Amy Dos Santos, reading specialist at Cumberland High School, with an effective date of August 28, 2018. Amy comes back to us. She was the reading specialist at North Cumberland Middle School and was, for budgetary cuts, was cut. And so when she returns, because she was on recall, she's a step 10, and she would receive her masters because she did not leave voluntarily. It was a, she was on recall. So even though we don't pay masters anymore for new employees, she's technically not considered a new employee. She was on recall. So she's, they recall her to where she was. So I just wanted to explain to you why she is listed with a masters and no one else is. Yedera Garcia Lopez, school counselor at Cumberland High School, with an effective date of August 28, 2018. She's a step 10. Heather Russo, secondary science teacher at Cumberland High School, with an effective date of August 28, 2018. She is a step six.
So Mrs. Vogel, I count 15 from A to H, correct? Okay.
And then I have.
Dispute that?
I have the fall coaching appointments too.
Okay. Let's take, let's take the 15, A to H, and then we'll come back and just do the other.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel recommendations.
Thank you. From A to H. Mister Fiorillo makes a motion to approval of the personnel recommendations as read by Mrs. Vogel, 15. Do I have a second? Second by Mister Demodica. All in favor? Against? Passage, passes six to zero. Thank you. Mrs. Vogel, aye. Right here.
Oh, okay.
Aye to H.
I'm moving up the list.
Sorry. All right. And so now I'll do the fall coaching appointments. If I pronounce someone's name wrong, I'm just gonna apologize, but, all right. So I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the following fall coaching appointments for the high school. Joshua Lima, football coach. Derek De Souza, assistant football coach. Gabrielle Gonzalez, junior varsity football coach. Bill Hogan, assistant junior varsity football coach. John Shakur, freshman football coach. Jackie La Pointe, girls' field hockey coach. Pamela Etheridge, assistant field hockey coach. Justin Resendez, boys soccer coach. Stephen Gorman, assistant boys soccer coach. John Hoxey, girls soccer coach. Cara Gorman, junior varsity girls soccer coach. Carrie Carpenter, boys cross-country coach. Vanessa Malloy, girls cross-country coach. Ruth Plant, girls volleyball coach. David De Jesus, assistant girls volleyball coach. Brandon Hanaway, girls tennis coach. Russell Wyatt, assistant girls tennis coach. Rachel Powell, fall cheerleading coach. And then the middle school ones. Sean Connolly, cross-country at North Cumberland Middle School. Christopher Fernandez, cross-country at Joseph L. McCourt Middle School. Alyssa McCourt, girls soccer at McCourt, same last name. Ron Leclerc, boys soccer at North Cumberland Middle School. Scott Winslow, boys soccer at McCourt Middle School. And we are still looking for a girls soccer coach at North Cumberland Middle School. I just texted Matt to make sure. He says he thinks that we'll have that soon.
Thank you. Mrs. Vogel, I was told the count is 23.
I trust you.
Okay. Thank you. Looking for a motion. Mister Denon makes a motion to approve the personnel recommendations in regards to the fall sports coaching appointments. 23 individuals. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, six to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Vogel.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, school committee comments, school liaison reports. Anyone? Mister Demodica.
Mister Chair, I just wanna give a big thank you to the town DPW workers who fixed the catch basin at the, beside the Wellness Center and did some work behind the high school. Been a while getting it, trying to get the work completed, and they saved the school district about $4,800, which can go to some other worthy project that the school district surely needs the funds for, so.
Excellent to hear.
Mister Stoick.
Thank you to Mister Stoick and the DPW workers in the town. Thank you. Anyone else? Mister Fiorillo?
In a couple of weeks, the, I will be on a two-day retreat, I guess, with the Rhode Island School Committee Association. One of our big topics of discussion will be the trainings for this coming year. So if anybody has any, any ideas or suggestions for those trainings or workshops for the coming year, please let me know.
Thank you.
Fiorillo, I'll repeat board of elections, so we can all file electronically.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mister Mitchell, do we have executive session?
No, we do not.
Next item on the agenda is to adjourn. Mister Fiorillo, I have a second. Mister Denon. By everyone on the committee. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, six to zero.